Thank you, Rob. I'll call our meeting here this morning Committee of the Whole to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item on this agenda? Seeing none, we have no business. Is there any business arising from minutes? Any delegations? I don't believe we have any determination of items requiring separate discussions. The consent agenda is there. Does anybody wish to have any of those withdrawn for further discussion? Counselor Hutchison?
There we go. Yes, I'd like to pull six out, please.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any others? Not seeing any, I entertain a motion to receive the balance of those. Counselor Hutchison. Second by Counselor McKay. Any discussion? All those in favor, that is carried. Thank you very much. Items for direction and discussion. The first is the mileage expense reimbursement policy. I need a motion. Well, the motion is there. Would you come and care to move that, please? It would be received. Counselor Dickert, Counselor Carlton, thank you very much. I believe Kim is speaking to this, so go ahead. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. The purpose of this report is to ask for your support this morning and to change the county's method of reimbursing mileage expenses for business travel that's undertaken using a personal vehicle. We have a current formula that we adopted back in 2008, and what we're requesting this morning is your support to change that to the mileage rate that the Canada Revenue Agency publishes annually. There has been, as noted in the report, a growing gap between the county's formula and the CRA rate. This has become concerning because under the Income Tax Act, if someone is paid at a rate that is not considered reasonable, either it's too high or too low, the mileage compensation becomes a taxable benefit. As noted in the report, if mileage becomes a taxable benefit, then county employees would need to track their detailed, as would you, track their detailed costs for vehicle operation and mileage driven, and the compensation received, and include this in your annual tax filing. The county in turn would need to complete a Form T 2200 for everyone who claimed mileage in any given year. So there would be quite a bit of administrative burden on everyone in this whole process. So using the CRA published rate has an additional step compared to what we do now. Right now, the county sets its mileage compensation rate every year based on that formula. Under the CRA process, there's two levels of mileage rate. For the first 5,000 kilometers that you claim, you are paid at one rate, and once you've exceeded 5,000 kilometers traveled, the rate changes, it declines. Most, I would say most people would never get to that 5,000 kilometer rate. But the step down is meant to, I think, acknowledge that once you've traveled that 5,000 kilometers, some of those basic requirements for insurance, et cetera, some of that has been covered off, and so the mileage then steps down from there. The report is asking Council to support this change effective June 1st. We really do want it to be within that that reasonableness test in what we're compensating everyone for. We will work to get updated claim forms and policy documents rolled out to everyone as quickly as possible. As noted again at the end of the report, based on what kind of travel expense claims we've seen in previous years, we expect that, you know, this final seven months of the year would probably amount to be about an increase of about $34,000 across the whole corporation. And we believe that much of that might be able to be covered off within existing budgets. If there's a need to go to the One Time Funding Reserve or elsewhere at the end of the year to reconcile all of this, that's certainly something that we can do. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Counselor DeBreen?
Get it started. Thank you, Kim. You explained it really well. I still have, I'm confused because I'm unsure of what this means to the requirements for filing of paper, the requirements of the county, but also our lower tier municipalities that follow or have adopted the county rate. So this not just affects county, but it could affect the budgets of all of our, of any of the lower tier municipalities that incorporate that mileage rate. Is this a requirement? Are we compromised by not following the CRA rate? Is this going to simplify it for everyone once all the paperwork is filed? I guess I'm just wondering. I don't even know what I'm wondering. If you could, if you could help guide us through that, thank you.
I'll start, and then maybe Mary Lou has some comments as well. Certainly, for anyone who's claiming mileage, if we make this change, the form that you use to claim your mileage is going to be updated, and the rate that you're compensated at will simply convert to the CRA rate at 70 cents rather than the 50 cents that the county is paying now. And we will also, over the next few weeks, then have to undertake a tally of the amount of kilometers that have been claimed year to date so that we can make sure that everyone is being compensated appropriately if there are new people who exceed that 5,000 kilometers and need to drop down to a different rate. As far as the member municipalities, this is not meant to force anyone to do anything. The county, we've heard from staff that there have been concerns, and so this is what brought this to our attention, and we started to, we looked into it further and realized that perhaps the formula that we had been using since, as I just said, 2008 perhaps wasn't accounting appropriately for the way some costs have changed, the cost of insurance, the cost of vehicles, and then again with fuel prices, et cetera. There are a lot of variables that go into that calculation, and some of them, I think, have have changed in significant ways that the original formula perhaps wasn't meant to account for. So this is protecting us from having to, I think, retroactively go back and deal with things for this year or potentially for previous years. So we want to be on a good foot so that we're not having to go back and do a lot of additional work, should there be a challenge to this. But I'll leave it there. And Mary Lou, I don't know if you have anything to add about the lower tiers. Thanks.
I think a number of the lower tiers have already moved to the CRA rate, and I know that there's a few that still use our calculation. We can work with those that are still using our calculation and provide them numbers if they choose not to move to what we're going to do.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Thank you, Kim. Any other questions? Counselor Dickert?
Thank you, Warden Mill. Thanks for the report, Kim. My question is, well, I do support this. You see it in, you know, private enterprises adopted this, and you see it pretty much across the piece. I just wondered, has there already been any investigation in looking at pool vehicles or rental vehicles, if you know, if you're going over 200 kilometers a day type of thing? Has that been investigated to offset any costs in future?
We have had conversations around the table a number of times. We did look into fleet probably three or four years ago now. I am aware that some of our member municipalities, and I'm thinking of Town of the Blue Mountains specifically, has had some real success using pool and fleet vehicles. We do have a few. I think our challenge with the, at the county level is just the huge geography that we cover, and where does the pool vehicle sit? And, you know, to, in order to make that useful for for people to be able to go and pick that up and then take it to where they want to go. So there has to be some efficiencies there as well. I think, you know, as as we go through this, that starts to be maybe on a, on a departmental basis, you start to look into this a little further. It's one thing as well to think that you could have a pool of smaller vehicles that were just meant to get staff from A to B, but some of our biggest drivers are in the transportation department in that end. They, goes, a little car isn't the vehicle that they're often needing. And so again, is it cost effective to try and have like pickup trucks and things like that? I think that gets to a different price point, and maybe there are less savings there. So a lot to consider, and we'll continue to look at that. You know, some places, you know, ask staff to, you know, rent cars for trips and things like that. But again, you're into that availability and efficiency of being able to use that, and it's simply not here in this market. But your point is well taken, and we continue to monitor that and to see what is available out in the marketplace for us to take advantage of.
Thank you. Counselor Gregg?
Thank you, Warden. And my question is along those same lines. I just wanted to ensure that I think it's beneficial where we encourage rental vehicles to be used when, and they, when they can be and should be utilized because there's a decrease in liability and subsequent, you know, any sort of an accident or issue arises, car theft, whatever. It's easier to wash your hands somewhat than if it's a personal vehicle involved. So I, I'm a big supporter of seeing us try to prioritize rentals if at all possible. And I was trying to extract out of the document, like, who exactly this pertains to? Because I can see where some county employees would probably, maybe in social services as well, have to utilize their own vehicles for a lot of clients' interaction. So I was trying to glean from, from the document who this really pertains to. If there is an element of personal travel involved in the business trip, then there is the conversation to be had about the taxable benefit that maybe should arise from it. So I wonder if I could just get a little bit more insight on who this pertains to and how it pertains to people that are driving. The report notes one individual already exceeding 5,000 kilometers, I think. So what are the departments most impacted? And I certainly would have been more comfortable if we could have, I hate using funding from reserves mid-year. So I would have been more comfortable if we could have implemented this on a go-forward on January 1st. The general rationale, 70 cents a kilometer, no problem. We do have a green and gray policy that it would be nice to see us apply the green and gray lens over top of it and, you know, support if Toyota Corolla or an EV is far cheaper, that our policy is applied in such a way that there is motivation to be rewarded for a more climate-friendly, reduced greenhouse gas emission vehicle perhaps than a, than a half ton or three quarter ton that might have higher emissions. If that's the policies we're going to adopt as a corporation, then we should be looking to apply them at every opportunity. So those are my questions, comments. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Gregg. Randy, you could maybe speak to climate change and the green fleet aspect of things. That's been a conversation, and I think, Mary Lou, you have some, some comments as well.
Yeah, with respect to the green fleet, so we're obviously looking at opportunities to install various chargers through various locations, including this main building as well as other facilities. We're currently waiting for some grant funding announcements as it relates to some of the MTO grant funding to be able to maybe move forward with some of those locations. That will help not only support fleet, but also potentially support some public charging when those, those chargers are not being used, depending on the location of those chargers. So we are looking at that. That's the first piece. We need the chargers, charging infrastructure in order to be able to look at then opportunities to support an EV fleet of vehicles that that aligns obviously with going green and gray. So that's just a status update on, on where we're at with the chargers. So we do, we worked with Transstation Services to look at a fleet green plan, I guess, and looking at how we can move towards a green fleet. Obviously, some of the vehicles that are on the market are possible, but we need that charging infrastructure in place first before we can start moving forward with, with those, moving the yardstick, so to speak.
Thank you, Randy. Mary Lou, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So with respect to Counselor Greg's question on who is involved, the two primary departments are transportation and housing services. So we've got inspectors that are going out to job sites, and you've got tenant services who are going out to our various buildings and the people that are managing projects. So those are the two departments that have people that exceeded 5,000 kilometers in 2023. With respect to the question on not preferring to do this as part of a budget process or at the beginning of a year, we did discuss this at senior management last year during the budget process and removed it during, because of the cost. Now we've seen, you know, the increase in fuel costs, and as Kim's mentioned, the cost of vehicles, et cetera. So the, the original policy that was created in 2008 really leaves people not being fully compensated for the cost of having to drive their own vehicle. And if we had all the housing people going out at the same time, we would need all these vehicles. Right? So it's still beneficial to us if staff are willing to drive their vehicles. And with respect to using the One Time Funding Reserve, that we put in there as the last choice. So if the budget is insufficient and cannot accommodate it, then we would go to the One Time Funding Reserve. Otherwise, we're looking for departments to try and make this work within their budget. And part of the policy we'll talk about, you know, obviously, you're trying to be responsible in how you, you drive. So if, you know, where are you going? Can you make one trip versus two, things like that? And I hope that helps to answer.
Thanks, Mary Lou. Do you have a follow-up, Counselor Gregg?
Thank you very much, and thanks for the response. It does help. Most of this is, certainly what I was concerned with is if people are traveling to, you know, I'll use a conference as an example, that it's not that we're just rushing people into their personal vehicles and that we encourage perhaps rentals for such an occasion. But that explanation, I think, is insightful in terms of this is individuals. Now we're speaking with convenience and being able to respond to the, the job and what it entails. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that explanation as well. The last part of the explanation, that becomes managerial. So, you know, I, I believe in the the employees and the managers in the corporations. So, you know, it's in their best, their capable hands in determining how they're, they're implementing the staff to go over their job. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor Mattressaw?
Thank you through you, the Chair. I'm in support of shifting this policy and doing it now and halfway through the year. Yes, it would have been, we've just heard the reason about why it didn't come forward. But we have to remember that we have to be, we have to be in an attractive workplace for people to contemplate coming here, to work here, or to stay here. So when we're looking at retention of, of human resources, I think this is actually, this could be a significant factor. I certainly know that I'm holding on to my 2015 Subaru Outback manual standard as long as I can because my family can't afford to add a new vehicle. And if somebody's looking at taking a job here and they're thinking, well, I don't know if I'm gonna, you know, if that's actually going to cover the, the wear and tear on my vehicle, I would hate to think that we lose somebody good coming here or that there's somebody here who doesn't stay because they have a better compensation in another place. So I think that that's part of it. We certainly, at the Town of the Blue Mountains, we are following the Canada Revenue Stream. That, that's how we do it. And we have some struggles about the geography just in our small postage stamp of, of our municipality. So I can imagine that the pooling would take some negotiation. We are, we're using it where we can, but at the same time, you know, one person starting their day, their schedule of what they need to go and do rather than needing to drive to some central location to pick up a vehicle, that will add time and that will add cost as well. So, but I certainly want to make sure that when we have good people working here that they feel that it's not going to be an encumbrance because there's going to be too much demand on their vehicle and that they're not getting the adequate compensation for it.
Thank you, Andrea. Counselor Body, okay?
Thank you, Warden Mill. And I'm a little bit off the edge here with, with Counselor Greg. Do we have a policy in place now for car rentals? As he talked about, I know at the city, we've got a policy that we've forgotten about. We had a contract with certain car rental companies to get discounts. And if we're going to conferences and things like that, then we had rent. The reason being, we had an employee several years ago that was in an accident with three or four people in the car. Luckily, they weren't injured, but employees, where is the insurance, where is all that type of stuff? If we don't have a policy, then maybe at the end of this, I'll move that we get a report to look at a policy. And I'm not sure if there's one there now or not.
Thank you, Counselor Body. We do have, they're actually in the research underpinning this report. There are a number of policies and guidelines in the county that touch on aspects of what we've discussed this morning. So I think one of the conversations with, with finance and again with Director Cornet or Director Moreau was thinking that we needed to pull all of that information together into one place and get that out as a concise document. It does talk about rental. It does talk about your responsibilities as far as insurance and having a license that's in good order and communicating that to, to us, et cetera. Like, there are a lot of different pieces that go into this, and so we want to use this as an opportunity to really refresh everybody's memory about what the requirements are and what we expect. Absolutely. And as far as the rentals go, most of the car rental agencies do have a government rate that you can ask for. I'm not aware that the county's negotiated a specific one that would provide us any additional benefit over and above that, but the government rate is available, and people are advised to ask for that. Thanks.
Okay, I think we've had lots of discussion, not necessarily about the report, but nonetheless, good discussion. Are we ready for the question? I think so. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. The next report is regarding a land purchase of the new Durham paramedic base. Deputy CIO Randy Schertz is going to take us through that report, but I need a mover and a seconder. So who would care? Counselor Bringle and Counselor Mackey. Randy?
Great, thank you, and good morning, everyone. So this is a follow-up report regarding the purchase of lands for the new paramedic base in Durham. So earlier this year, Council directed staff to conditionally offer to purchase lands from West Gray for $150,000 to construct the new paramedic base. And I'm pleased to say that West Gray has agreed to sell the lands for that agreed-upon price. The offer to purchase was conditional on several matters. One was conditional on connecting a title search, completing an environmental site assessment, as well as entering into a cost-sharing agreement with West Gray as it relates to the county's share of the road and servicing works that are being constructed by West Gray this year. In terms of the site investigation results, so for the title search, County Legal Services staff conducted an initial title search. There were no concerns or issues that were identified that cannot be addressed as part of the land transfer process. In terms of the environmental site assessment, we hired GM Blue Plan following an RFQ process. They conducted an environmental site assessment on the lands. They concluded the potential for environmental impacts or risks associated with either onsite or offsite sources is considered to be low. We've also hired GM Blue Plan to do soils and geotechnical analysis on the site. This is to further supplement some soils and geotech work that West Gray had done previously for part of the subject lands. So we'll be able to have now soils and geotech for the entire property. This will help to inform the final design work when we hire a contractor to, to construct the building. We also did an archaeological assessment. So fieldwork was conducted by an archaeologist. The, we haven't received the final reports yet, but we have confirmed with the archaeologists that during the fieldwork, they found no archaeological finds during their investigations. In terms of the road and servicing cost-sharing agreement, so as noted, West Gray will be installing roads and services not only to service the paramedics' base lands, but the police station, which is also being, starting construction this year. Staff are in the process of finalizing a draft cost-sharing agreement with West Gray for our proportionate share of the road. This will be similar to the Rockwood Terrace Early Works Agreement that we entered into with West Gray. So what we're using would be the distance of the frontage of the paramedic base lands where they're building the roads and services. We would use that as the calculation to determine what our proportionate share of those costs are. So based on an estimate, the current estimate of the road and servicing works, it works out to be approximately $200,000 plus potential any contingencies plus, plus taxes. So the actual proportion cost won't be known, obviously, until we, West Gray receives the tender results and until the actual project is completed later this year. But that's based on the estimates that we've received so far. So we're in the works of trying to complete that cost-sharing agreement with West Gray. And once we have a final draft, we will bring that back to Council for your consideration. This is just showing the draft, our plan. This is being, currently being done also by West Gray's consultants through a surveyor. You can see in blue the paramedic base lands. Part four is the area that I was talking about where the road and services will be installed. So again, that will be used as the measurement area to determine what our proportionate share of the road and services will be. The green is the rest of the road and services that West Gray would be responsible for. And then the West Gray Police Station lands are shown in, in pink or red there on the screen. In terms of the design build tender, so staff are in the process of finalizing a draft design and, and design specifications. And those will be included in the design build tender RFP document. And what staff are recommending is that the RFP release following, subject to Council's support of this motion that's before you today. Gray County Climate Change staff were successful in applying to a program through Enbridge. And this program basically allows you to get access to energy experts who will help develop an energy efficiency plan for whatever building that you're constructing or proposing. And some of the energy efficiency recommendations will be incorporated into the design specs for the, for the Durham base, including things like air source, heat pumps, LED lights, things like that, just to, again, help keep the costs, energy costs low for this building. The overall stormwater design for the paramedic base lands, as well as the police station lands, as well as the remaining portion of lands, which we understand could be a future subdivision, will be completed by West Gray's engineering consultant. And this will help to ensure that the overall stormwater design for all those lands will be done so that everything ties together, so we don't have isolated stormwater ponds on individual properties. So this is something that we hope that will help overall save everyone's costs as it relates to stormwater design. Here's a drawing, which is also included in the report, showing the proposed elevation drawings for the building. So these drawings have been completed in-house by Aaron Whitney. He's in our housing department in consultation with, of course, Paramedic Chief Kevin McNabb, as well as Paramedic Services Operation Manager Jeff Adams. So they've been busy trying to finalize some of the design specs, which of course will be incorporated into the design build RFP so that, we're hoping that 80% of the design will be essentially completed, and then the contractor will just be finishing up some of the details as it relates to mechanical, electrical, things like that. This just shows a draft floor plan, which again is also in the report. In terms of next steps, again, subject to today's motion that's being considered by Council today, legal services staff will then work with the Alliance and West Gray's lawyer to finalize the purchase and transfer of the lands. And a bylaw will be brought back to Council to authorize the actual final transfer of the lands. West Gray's consultant, as I know, is currently working with a surveyor to finalize the reference plan, showing the West Gray's consultant is, as I know, is currently working with a surveyor to finalize the reference plan, showing the property boundaries for the paramedic base lands. And uh, we'll pay our proportionate share of the survey costs for that survey, as well as any legal costs associated with the land sale transaction. Staff will work uh, with West Gray to finalize that cost sharing agreement I talked about. And again, we'll bring that back to council for your consideration. And again, staff will finalize the R F P documents and hope to issue that soon. And once we have the tender results, again, that will come back to council for awarding that tender. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any questions? Counselor Greg?
Thank you. And through you, uh, Warden, question regarding um, just the the schematics or the drawings here uh, and how they relate to Craig Lee. That was the um, example provided a few months ago. Uh, is this kind of a a postage stamp of Craig Lee, or is there substantial differences in terms of scale additions? Uh, offices, there it's noted, there's three here, uh, wellness room. Are any of these additions beyond the earlier comparison that was provided to council? And if so, what's the justification of the rationale for alterations?
Go ahead, Kevin.
So we use the Craig Lee base as the template plan, and we kept that as as much as we could. Uh, there was a recommendation, and you see this more and more with bases of having a wellness room, a separate area for staff to go to uh, decompress after a call, to meet with peer support. So we did incorporate that in in the rest areas. But but overall, the basic template kept the same of that. The, and and when you look at the base and the garage area, that is the similar what the Craig Lee base is. The administrative side is that logistics area, which we did talk about. That would be a part of this plan, that our logistics space, we've outgrown it and sound. And we will be moving logistics and and supply management to the Durham area. And that's also where we'll have our second supervisor at that area as well. So that that was part of the original plan, too. The idea is now is that we have this template done that uh, we could reproduce this with a two-car bay uh, to go to other areas of the county for cost savings that uh, I would say we took a pretty reasonable approach. We look at plans that are there for paramedic bases and what they consist of. Um, and and again, making it functional, same time costs, cost savings wherever we could, so.
Thanks, Kevin. Is that, you're good? Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Cantner?
Uh, thank you. And through you, uh, Mr. Warden, I just, is there any um, analysis at this point of uh, the potential impact on on this facility of the loss of those ten beds at the Durham Hospital? There just, is there any sort of uh, do we know how that is going to affect one way or another, the uh, the need for and the uh, the size of and everything to do with it? Thank you.
When we look at uh, paramedic services in relation to the hospital, what we look at for is is for paramedics' response and the area of response. Uh, so for us, Durham is the appropriate place to have a base based upon the population there and where it's geographically located. Uh, it is good to be close to a hospital that for restocking afterwards. It's not a requirement. Uh, we do see pressures on our system, though, with uh, with the hospital losing its beds. Particularly, and we're uh, talking next week of what those pressures will do at the end of the day when they have to relocate patients out of the emerge to other hospitals and what that will, will they rely upon our services to do that? Because now with the hospital being closed and we potentially losing ambulance from that town or more, if there's two or three patients, uh, what does that look like for our service, particularly at what are a busier time of the day and also a shift change as well? So there are some uh, ramifications from this that we still have not had discussions yet and uh, but there will potentially be pressures on our service.
Thank you, Kevin. This is a good question, but I I and a good answer, but I I don't want to go off into that right now. We're gonna probably have further discussion later on. Any other question? Kim, did you want to?
Just the 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 bottom line, I think, in your, to your point, Kevin, is that Durham is the right place for this base. No matter what happens, this is the, this is the place. And our external consultant, O R H, Kevin did have them look at this and and run the numbers and evaluate again. And I think the response, the information that you got back from them confirmed that, you know, the Durham commitment is the right one to make.
Thank you, Kim. Counselor Body?
Thank you, Warden. Just a quick question. Uh, Gray County already owns a pretty big chunk of property there. Was there a reason? Is there any reason why we couldn't put it on the property that Gray County owns already, or why are we uh, going external? Was it considered, I guess, is the question?
Yeah, that that definitely was considered um, in terms of the overall kind of vision potential for those uh, lands that are outside of the Rockwood Terrace lands. Um, you know, there's, we're currently exploring the ability to use those for for uh, supporting housing projects in in the future. Um, plus the access point for these lands right off of uh, Gray Road Four um, provides quick access to to uh, for emergency vehicles. So um, in fact, we're going to be designing it so that there's an emergency vehicle uh, exit uh, for this um, uh, property so that it gets right directly onto Gray Road Four as quick as we can. Um, so based on the location, based on some other factors, we looked at the the various properties and this one uh, definitely stood out uh, as being a the top choice and the top recommendation for staff.
Thank you, Randy. Any other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Randy. Five to eleven, do we want to take a recess? Yeah, I see a couple heads are nodding. All right, we'll recess and we'll reconvene at uh, eleven oh five. Okay, we are uh, ready to roll here again. Welcome back, everybody. So uh, we will now deal with the uh, one item that was pulled regarding the West Grade judicial or the South Bruce Gray Health Center decision regarding the Durham Hospital. So Counselor Hutchison, what is your pleasure, sir?
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, uh, I'm sure everyone's aware of the announcement by South Bruce Gray for the ten inpatient beds um, closing in Durham. So uh, obviously, everyone's aware, the community's been very active. Um, we've also, West Gray Council uh, endorsed retaining a um, a legal uh, um, well, a lawyer firm to represent us on the legal side of this and what we could do. So uh, we're asking basically for your request and uh, join us because we think the impact goes beyond not just uh, West Gray Durham, but into Gray County. That's where we're at. We're looking for your support.
So I guess I'm procedurally, we need a motion, Tom. Uh, did you talk to the clerk or does she?
No, well, Mayor Eccles announced to me this morning that, or yes, yesterday, I believe he may have discussed, I'm not sure, he made an announcement to go to Congress for today.
Okay, so what we have here uh, is correspondence from West Gray. The recommendation is to receive for information if you'd like to uh, amend that or or propose. Just looking for it on the screen here. So there's, there's what we have in our agenda package. That's what is being recommended by staff. So I'm looking for your direction from you, Tom, as to what you'd like to do with that.
I would move, yes, I would move. I would move this, yes, thank you. I want to double check it.
So you're moving for this to be received for information?
I was looking for something.
I'll ask the CEO to, perhaps she'll have a way forward out of this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, councillor Body. I was looking for that. I'd seen it and I couldn't put my hand on it. So the correspondence from the county, oh, sorry. Yes, thank you. That's the one that I thought I'd seen. I wondered, that's the one on the screen that I would move. Thank you.
All right. Now we know what we're talking about. Is there a second for that motion? Councillor Debrina is seconding the motion. Discussion, questions? Councillor Greg, we also, we do have the option to go into closed session to get direction from our legal staff. Jaclyn is here. But if you have other questions that would be appropriate ahead of closed session, by all means. It's councillor Greg.
Thank you, Warden. I, I think it's great the municipality of West Gray responded quickly. The request for judicial review, I think you have to make that request within thirty days of a decision. So it would seem that you've responded quickly. At this table, and you spoke the words, I think. I'm more comfortable with responding to what I know. And at this point, I would be more responsive to a report coming back from staff that outlined and detailed the impacts to Gray County. And before we really push forward with input on this, it'd be nice to know what are the impacts? I mean, we've had staff comments verbally at times, just put on the spot, but I'd be more comfortable with directing staff to provide something more detailed in terms of how this would play out and its impacts to the county before we just align ourselves with the judicial appeal. I know there's thirty days, so it's time sensitive, but it would seem that you've already initiated that, which is great. But I think there's a whole lot more information that the council could learn from staff, given the opportunity to put together an appropriate report.
Thank you, and I think it would be appropriate to go in camera to discuss what our options are and how things might play out. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into closed session. Councillor Mackey, seconded by councillor Dickert. All those in favor? That is carried, and I'll ask Jaclyn, Tim, and Randy. And anyone else do we think we need? I don't think so. So we'll go into closed session, discuss that. Thank you, Rob. And I apologize procedurally, I should have read the motion or the reason going to closed session. The reason was that we were getting advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And specifically regarding the judicial review of South Bruce Gray Health Center decision to transfer inpatient beds out of the Durham Hospital, and I can confirm that we only discussed that item. Okay, the motion is on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That fails. Councillor Body.
Subsequent motion, I would move that the warden immediately, request an immediate meeting with the Minister of Health if we get that meeting, that we invite South Bruce Gray Health Center to join us to discuss this, this issue. I'll let you get a second and then I'll speak to it.
Seconded by councillor Hutchison. Councillor Body.
You know, I the, 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 one, the one policy fits all doesn't work for rural Ontario, or maybe the one policy fits nobody doesn't work for rural Ontario with healthcare. We need funding, and it's so obvious. We've been beating on the door for getting funding for doctor recruitment, things like that, that other municipalities that have much bigger population bases are able to do. We look at something like this where we've got emergency services closing in a, in a rural setting due to lack of staffing, whether it be nursing or doctors. This isn't working for us in Gray County or probably anybody across the province, and I don't think we can afford to wait until we get to AMO for delegations. And even at that, we'll consider that in a few minutes. Five out of six items that we've gotten here to discuss AMO in a few minutes say rural healthcare, healthy rural communities, healthy rural, healthy rural, healthy rural, healthy rural healthcare. This is a big problem that we can't wait, especially in this issue. If we can give support to South Bruce Gray Health Services to find funding, to find any way to get the province to help them to get those services back open at Durham, then I think it's a plus, and I think that's where we gotta go. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to that? Councillor McQueen.
So I, I support moving forward. The only procedural question I have is we did pass a motion at our last committee, the whole meeting that was approved just today in the minutes, that Saffy directed to investigate a delegation directly to the Ministry of Health with respect to the South Bruce Gray Health Center matter. So we sort of got a motion on the books already. So I think we need to word this up. This is maybe amending that motion originally. And add more, I'm not sure procedurally how.
Well, yeah, and I agree with you to the extent that the motion, I believe, two weeks ago was to request in writing a meeting with the minister. And, and that's been done. Hundred percent it's been done. I, I think the motion this morning, or, yeah, this morning still. Just add some urgency to that, just to reinforce that we want a meeting. So I'll defer to the clerk as to what she thinks we need to do or should do. Madam Clerk.
I think the insertion of the word continue to pursue adds almost like a, a new action. So I think procedurally, it's, it's okay.
All right, councillor McQueen.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I just, in a sense, it had been passed and maybe following up from a motion that was passed. We're reiterating, you know, somehow it shows that we've done it, and we're doing it because you have not got a response, and maybe that needs to be incorporated because you just mentioned that you have been trying. And so, you know, adding some urgency to this motion to say like, we're, we're not taking no for an answer, and it's further more reinforced is where we want to go. So I think as long as it's wording that way, or you can word it that way, we're not taking no for an answer.
You're right, hundred percent. And I guess, as I indicated earlier, I thought, or think, our MPP sort of has the in-track on trying to get those kinds of meetings, and so far, we've been unable to do that. Any other, councillor Debrina, did you have your hand up earlier? Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden, and I was just going to point out that I believe the second clause encouraging the continuation of pursuing that meeting. I think we understand the urgency, we understand the importance of it, and everything will be done to, to further that meeting without demanding which, again, can close doors.
Yeah, there's always a nice way to ask urgently. Councillor Greg.
I guess, you know, I support the motion, but there's almost a step before it that I would have been happy to see, and that would have been just the invitation to the CEO and board chair of South Bruce Gray Health Services to come to Gray County Council. And, you know, establish that and have that line of commu- of communication presented to at a local level. Like, it's one thing to go to the the province and advocate with the minister, but it still seems like it's, 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 you know, light years away from the local residents. It may get things done, but it doesn't ground the issues that we're facing and just make it as transparent as maybe we could be. And I just think it would be great to have the board chair and the CEO before councils, so we can have that communication and we can have those items of, you know, consensus and concern in a transparent manner and highlighted to the, to the public. What are they now? What are they going to be? We have an aging population. We have significant demands on our paramedic services, but just outline everything, outline the pressures that they're facing now and outline what they foresee. And together, we at the end of the day, there's only one taxpayer, and that's what you're gonna hear all the time from the province. They've only got so much money, they're spending more on on healthcare now than they've ever been. And that's indisputable. But what are the exact pressures? What are the opportunities to come together and and advocate for measures that will meet those demands? I just think there's something it would be great to have them here to interact with council even before this taking place.
I, I won't disagree with you, and in fact, that opportunity was extended to the CEO and the Chair of the Board of South Bruce Gray Health Center and multiple times, and they in fact did agree to come until late last week, when the agenda was being assembled. And we received communication that they were not coming, and that was the end of any communication with that organization, unfortunately. But we continue to reach out to, you know, give them an opportunity to state their case, so to speak. Because I truly do feel that while the ministry may not have been part of the decision, the ministry is very much part of the solution here. And if there is a solution, it runs through Ministry of Health. So we will continue to do, I will continue to do what I can from this office to try and get a meeting, to get some satisfaction as to what is going on. Councillor McQueen.
Couple of things, the ministry does pay pay the bill. The ministry does fund hospitals, but I just wondered if they're for consideration, amendment or in addition, is furthermore, this is circulated to all lower-tier municipalities and the county upgrade for their support as well. I'm thinking of Hanover, and I'm thinking of others, you build us up a little bit also from your lower tier and, you know, and get support from their councils as well. You put a bit more pressure, and you can maybe go outside that box as well, right? Just to put some pressure, as you may see, but I think support is the, is the word I'm so I don't know, I look for your guidance or the mover and the second, or I'm not sure who is the second, or I see, I know Ian Body was the mover, I'm not sure who the second is, or if there isn't, I'll second the motion, but I'm just thinking that furthermore, circulation for support, I think is important as well to lower tiers of municipalities in Gray County. And all that's from the amendment to the mover, second are worth considering, but all right, we can move that.
It's all right with the mover and second, we'll circulate the motion to the lower tiers as well. Agreed. Thank you. Any further discussion? All the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay. We have two more items to discuss in closed session. Do you want to do the AMO delegations first? Anybody object to that? Not seeing any. Let's move on to other business. We'll come back to the other two closed meeting matters after this. So the motion is on the floor, there is, is in front of you. Anybody care to move that, please? Councillor Debrina, seconded by councillor Carlton, thank you. Discussion, questions? Councillor Keveney, did you, did I see your hand up? Sorry, I saw somebody, maybe Rob was waving me, no, he wasn't waving it. Scott was waving, saying it's lunchtime. Okay, Kim's gonna maybe speak to why we were asked for the ones that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So what we've prepared here are six potential AMO delegations. I have circulated these potential AMO delegations to your member municipality CAOs as well, in case they had questions or had anything to add to this. As was pointed out just now by councillor Body, there are a number of them that relate to rural and rural healthcare, and that's a deliberate strategy to try and kind of broaden the impact of these, of what we're seeing happening in Durham, because as was pointed out, this has implications not only for Gray County, but for Bruce County and for rural communities across the province. The first one with the Ministry of Health, specifically to do with rural healthcare and, and hospitals, and the need for appropriate funding and system planning and consultation, and Bruce County has agreed that they would like to join us in that delegation, simply be, you know, Durham is a situation, Chesley is a situation, and there are, you know, others around that have had those questions asked again. So we would like to work together with them on that delegation. OMAFRA, the second delegation, OMAFRA holds the rural file. And, you know, is to be concerned with representing the interests and the health and viability of rural communities. And so we need a rural voice at the cabinet table regarding those rural needs. And so this, you know, very broadly talks about access to primary care, schools, childcare, funding for infrastructure. All of those things go into making a rural community able to be successful, to attract and retain investment, population, et cetera. So we want to bring some very specific Gray County examples to that table. Municipal affairs and housing, this is, we very recently had a planning report to do with changes to the Planning Act and Bill 185 and development charges, all those things. Well, there's a piece here as well to talk about healthy rural communities and where the planning legislation is supporting us and where we continue to be challenged either financially or or matters related to housing and growth. The Ministry of Economic Development and Trade, rural Ontario is where the land is. We're seeing significant investments happening in rural Ontario. We continue to look for those investments, but what we hear from our colleagues at the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and others is that, again, that infrastructure that makes a community successful has to be there along with the the investment by the individual companies. How can we attract and retain business investment without the basic infrastructure to support it? So this goes beyond the things that I spoke about a moment ago and continues on into things like inter-community transportation, labor force development, support for the satellite campuses of community colleges, et cetera, et cetera. Sort of on a different, a little bit of a different tack, we've had a number of discussions with MTO over the years. There's still the, the need, I think, to make progress on finalizing what that alternate route is for Highway 26. Where do we want to go with that? Wondering if there's a potential to once again have that delegation jointly, certainly with Town of the Blue Mountains, but also potentially with Gray Highlands to talk to MTO, and I don't know, Pat and Randy might have further details around that. And then finally, with the Ministry of Long-Term Care, we would ask for delegation there, also to talk about rural healthcare and access to primary care. The need for long-term sustainable funding for community paramedicine and community paramedicine for long-term care, and also to give them an update on the Rockford Terrace redevelopment project and where that stands. So those are the six delegations that my staff, we thought we'd put forward for your consideration if you have any refinements or additions to the list. Happy to hear it. Thank you.
Councillor Mattressopps.
Thank you through you, the Chair, and yes, we just went through the process at our committee, the whole two.
So there's no concerns there. So we'll just wait a few minutes and see what the implications might be. If it's going to be a significant period of time, perhaps we could recess to lunch. If, if not, we'll just wait and carry on. Rob says we are up and going again. Excellent work, gentlemen. Although I was looking forward to lunch, to be honest. But anyway, let's carry on. So okay, councillor Mattressopps, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So through the warden, yes, we went through at the Town of the Mountains, we've gone through the list of what will be appealing to, but also councillor McQueen and councillor Kentner and I also participate in, in the South Georgian Bay Mayors and CAOs Forum. And we are, we are contemplating what we are going to put in for in terms of, of a delegation for that. So we can keep you apprised as to what who ends up winning the lottery on, on getting face time in front of the ministries and be able to extend that invitation both to the county level as well over in Simcoe County for our other three members of that South Georgian Bay Forum. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor De Breen?
Thank you, Warden Milne. And I think the importance of this list goes back to, and if I may, something that Warden Milne has said in the past, very recently, is that, that building healthy, healthy communities is much more than just putting up sticks and building houses. The, all of these bullets, all of these points and these requests tie into helping us to fulfill the province's request to build more houses, but keeping our communities healthy at the same time. So I support this a hundred percent.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor McQueen?
Just a brief note, just around the table, who is attending AMO? Because you're going to have a delegation, you need people there as well, right? So I know I'm attending. So just so we have a bit of an idea, who's going to be there from the county's perspective as well.
Yeah, I think we've got sufficient numbers to bang on the doors. Tables, whatever. Anyone else? Not seeing any? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go back to the two closed meeting matters. Someone care to move? We'll go into closed session, councillor Hutchison and councillor Patterson. And we are going into closed session to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations, specifically an offset limit for bargaining with OPSU 250 paramedic services. And secondly, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals, specifically 138 Kandahar Lane subdivision appeal update. So we will go in camera to discuss those. All those in favor? That is carried. Sure, we'll have a bio break. Whatever that is. Thank you, Rob. We are now back in open session, and I can confirm that we only discussed those two items that were listed on our in-camera agenda. Is there any notice of motion today? Not seeing any, I need one more motion to adjourn councillor Pringle and councillor Patterson. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Mayor C and Mi Guetch.